We just called to order six o'clock, city council meeting on July eighth, 2025. Norma, you conduct the road call?
Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Voskis.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney is absent. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Norma. I'm gonna call to the podium Pastor Daniel Armstrong of Asbury United Methodist, but I'm gonna ask everyone to take a moment and stand. We're gonna have a moment of silence tonight to honor and remember one of our own. Officer Bailey Martin was camping out in Kerrville this past weekend with his family and tragedy struck. So let's take just a moment to remember one of our own.
Gracious God, in the midst of life, it's hard to understand some of the tragedy that happens on this day when we gather to do a business for the city, Lord. Sometimes the business dispels in comparison to the things that are going on around us. And today, we not only want to remember Bailey and his family, but all those who have been affected by these floods. For those who have lost parents, those who have lost children, those who have lost ones they loved. Well, we pray that your Spirit would be upon them to give them strength during this difficult time. And Lord, we also give thanks for the first responders, those who are spending time putting their life in harm's way to, Lord, we pray still to recover or to find those living. But Lord, we also pray that they would find the missing ones so that families would have some closure. Lord, you tell us in the Scripture that "Come to me those who are weary and heavy laden." That's how we feel right now. And Lord, we just pray that your Spirit would strengthen us and continue to strengthen the first responders and those who are in the midst of all this. In the midst of that, Lord, we still have to do business. My prayer is that your Holy Spirit would give wisdom to those on the council, Lord, that the decisions they would make would not serve their own interests, but, Lord, ultimately serve you in the interest of this city. And Lord, we give you thanks that in the midst of all that's going on, we never are alone because you are with us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Armstrong. Councilman Del Griffiel, lead us in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Please be seated. All right, we're gonna postpone Crystal Cruz's day for a short time, but I would like to recognize everyone that participated in the city golf circuit a couple of years ago. Where is Aaron? There he is, Aaron. Come up here, Aaron. Explain to everyone what we are doing.
Well, the city of, just recently, the city of Odessa had an employee charity golf tournament. This has been something that has been missing from our city since, I think, pre-COVID. We haven't really done it since then. So we brought it back. And forty-six folks from the city participated in this, and it was a great time for everybody. And in doing so, they raised $3,762.05 for the Employee Charity Committee. Norma, and maybe you could give us a little bit of insight as to what that committee does.
Yes, thank you. So back in 1990s, in the early 90s, the city manager had requested that the city come together and form a committee to help our very own, our city employees. When they come in a time of need, they can go into this committee, like possibly for emergency situations, medical issues. When they come to the committee, they get in an application and out of our own City of Odessa employees' donations and fundraisers, we turn it back and give it back to our very own. And it's been a very successful program, and we are really grateful for the funds that are being given because it really just goes back straight to our pay.
Okay. Maybe we could bring everybody else up.
Yes, the committee members that are here.
All right, let's move to the consent agenda. Want to have a chance to take a look at it?
Yeah. Mayor, I would, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the stipulation that we allow the interim city attorney, Key Stretcher, to sign these documents in lieu of Dan Jones.
Your motions are second?
Second.
Say my councilman Voskis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. All right, let's move to our regular agenda item. Item number 10, discuss and consider Stony Ridge, no parking restrictions. Is there any speakers we have for this, Norma, item 10?
Yes, sir. You ready for the speakers?
I would say so.
Just a reminder of the three-minute timer.
Okay, and I have, I have pictures for everybody if, can I?
I'd like to say good evening to all of you. I'd like to say good evening to all of you and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And I'm speaking on behalf of Churchill Forge Properties in reference to the Country Crest Town Homes at 6,500 East Ridge Road, where we have been good-standing members of the community for 32 years. Our concern is that we weren't notified of the city council meeting in May when no parking on Stony Ridge was decided, and we didn't have the opportunity to make any suggestions or offer any possible solutions other than no parking at all on our perimeter street. At this time, I'd like to offer a few suggestions that may potentially resolve the issues for all in our neighborhood. To, if we could only allow parking on sections of Stony Ridge where the curvature of the street doesn't affect the street view from being obstructed and making it safer for everyone. It's picture one and picture two, our property map, and then actual picture of the street. And if we could add a mirror across the alleyway on the south end of our property used by the residents in Emerald Gardens, like the one that's down Stony Ridge, for the residents in Lynx, as Stony Ridge is a windy road. And those are pictures three and four. And then if we could put limitations on the vehicles that can be parked on Stony Ridge, such as not allowing utility trucks or service trucks. And just past our alley, if we could mark this, just past our alley on the south end of the sidewalk, if that could be no parking, marked no parking because the cars are still parking there, and it's not marked at all, and that was one of the problematic areas, which actually isn't in front of our property. We will be happy to educate our residents on where and what vehicles can be parked on Stony Ridge. And if you could please let us help control the areas where no parking is allowed, could it be possible for us to be, to give permission, to be given permission to have the violators towed, and we're willing to pay for the stickers at our expense and notify your tow company? We're in agreement that it's a problem. It was a problem. And if there's, if, one last thing is if the no parking signs are staying, can we please have nicer signs? The poles don't match the existing street signs that are there. They're not uniform, and they're ugly. The property is very well-maintained, the lawns are manicured, and I just feel that the signs hurt us aesthetically on a level, and that's picture six and seven.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other speakers?
Mr. Mayor and members of the Odessa City Council, my name is Robert Nolan, and I've been a resident of Odessa since 1989. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. I will be brief. First, let me also offer my condolences to the entire city of Odessa and the Odessa Police Department, the passing of Officer Martin. Now to the matter at hand. At a recent city council meeting, this council voted to extend the no parking zone on Stony Ridge to include the west side of the street in front of Country Crest Town Homes. This cut off parking for many residents who have more than two vehicles because we're only allowed two parking spots for each unit. Our only option now is to park on East Ridge Road, which is far more dangerous. Stony Ridge is not a major thoroughfare. It's mainly used by the residents of not only Country Crest, but the neighborhoods that branch off of Stony Ridge. Ever since the opening up of East Ridge Road, east of the Tressles apartment a few years ago, leading to Billy Hexton eventually Fodderd Road, East Ridge has become a major artery to residents living outside of Loop 338. With only an all-way stop at the intersection of Rocky Lane and East Ridge, cars passing in either direction in East Ridge routinely exceed the 40 mile per hour speed limit, making parking on either side of East Ridge Road unsafe. With the right-handed curve of East Ridge Road in front of the complex, drivers turning left from East Ridge onto Stony Ridge often must wonder if a car heading in the opposite direction is going to cross over into the turn lane and hit them head-on. I've been almost hit on several occasions in the past three years that I've lived there. With all these factors, I'd like the council to consider the following measures. One, reverse the no parking ban on the west side of Stony Ridge from the northern entrance of the complex to the alley between the complex and the houses on Emerald Garden Drive. It's would allow residents a safe place to spark, park with a slower speed limit and restrict parking to complex residents, next, complex residents next to the house that's at the corner of Emerald Garden. A two-car length buffer zone should also be placed at both entrances of the complex on Stony Ridge as well as the alley to allow better sidelines. Since East Ridge Road is also labeled a bike lane, we could consider taking East Ridge down to one lane plus a turn lane in each direction and adding bike lanes from just east of Loop 338 to Emerald Oak Lane, the new housing project. The city has already done this in a couple of areas on Grandview Avenue, excuse me, on Maple Avenue from Grandview to Beverly and Oakwood Drive from University to Grandview in the recent years. In both instances, street-side parking has become safer because of these buffer zones. And then the third thing is lower the speed limit on the East Ridge Road between Loop 338 and Billy Hexton, 30 miles an hour, and add an additional all-way stop at that intersection of East Ridge and Stony Ridge. That will make this street safer. All of this will enhance safety for the drivers on the street and for those needing to park on East Ridge Road because of the curvature of East Ridge. Neither of the residents of Country Crest or the homeowners along Stony Ridge and that neighborhood are going anywhere. We're here to stay, and we've lived in harmony for almost 40 years. With a sensible change in traffic and parking patterns on both East Ridge and Stony Ridge, all the residents can continue to coexist safely. Thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration to this matter.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Marita Hendrick, and I live in this neighborhood. And it is wonderful since the parking has been not allowed on Stony Ridge. I would propose it also be eliminated on East Ridge because when you stop at that stop sign, that East Ridge has gotten so busy now that you can't see the cars that are coming. And I go through that stop sign several times a day, and each time I look 12 times just to make sure there's no cars coming. And they come around that curve very fast, and it's very difficult to see those cars coming. Thank you.
Those are all.
Mayor, I put this on the agenda, so I'd like to, I've got a video. Where's Monica? Who's got it? Let me, I just want to show the rest of the council what we're talking about here. It's not, it's not the parking on Stony Ridge as much as it is the, the sightlines at the stop sign of Stony Ridge and East Ridge. These are the cars that were, before we made the no parking down Stony Ridge. This picture here is how many utility vehicle, oilfield utility vehicles were parked in there. There's lots of kids in these apartments, and several people going down Rocky, Stony Ridge have been scared to death and almost hit some kids chasing balls, et cetera. In fact, one of my friends almost hit a lady walking across the street one day because she stepped out from behind all these trucks. And there's another picture of it there. That's down East Ridge looking west. And if you see those cars there, if you're at that stop sign, you can't see past those. There's no way. Now, here's a, here's a live shot, and you can see how the, how East Ridge, that's East, yeah. That person turning right there is turning onto Stony Ridge. And the cars parked down the north side, you see how many trucks are down there? That is the problem. Those apartments were built in 1963, or 83, I believe, and they were meant to be two-bedroom houses for four people and two cars. And it's just, there's more than two, my estimation is, there's got to be more than two people living in a lot of those apartments, which is happening all over town. What happens is you get a company vehicle, a private vehicle, and the wife's vehicle or another person that's living in the house. So you may have as many as three or four vehicles per apartment. I don't know. But in the, in the back, there's two parking spaces for everybody. And when you go back and look, is there another slide? I thought there was one more slide. There's no more, okay, I thought I had, I thought we had one of the parking lot, but there's, it looks like there's adequate parking behind there. I've driven through it many times just to see how many cars are parked back there. And I believe these people just wanted to park there because it's convenient to walk right in their front doors instead of in their back doors. But I'm concerned about the safety, and it's that intersection that's the problem. Stony Ridge, I disagree with that one comment about the fact that the Stony Ridge is not a through street. Well, it didn't used to be, but it is more now than it was because it comes off of Highway 80 as Newell Road. It dead-ends into Lynx and turns, curves left, and it turns into Stony Ridge and goes all the way down to East Ridge. Ferguson's is, Lighting Center is down at that corner on I-20, or Highway 80 and Newell Road, and their trucks, for whatever reason, are coming up that way occasionally, which probably need to stop that as well. I see them quite a bit. But that road, people use to get from East Ridge to Highway 80 a lot. And I just believe it's a very serious situation. The chains was made to let people park there. I'm not sure exactly, exactly when. It was quite a while ago, you know. And you can see in this picture here, you can see the yellow stripe now, and you can see a black stripe to the right of it. Well, that was where the old center stripe used to be. But anyway, I just believe, and the people in the area just believe it's just too dangerous. And to put another stop sign there on East Ridge, you have one, it's down at Rocky Lane. So it'd be two within a very short distance. So I don't know what the solution is, council. I'm just sharing a concern. And one of our, I believe one of our duties is to, is for public safety, and I believe this is a very serious problem. And we have a lot of these in town, but this one's, this one's bad. There's lots of traffic there. And you could see on that, go back, if you could, that, that video showing the traffic on East Ridge, you can see how, you can see how fast, you know, it's all moving. And you look at all the cars going west, and then look at that one coming east, right around that corner. It's just, they just really fly by there. I don't know how they get going that fast between that stop sign and there. It's not that far. But they do. So that's the issue.
I have a question regarding this. The gentleman that spoke, your name again?
Robert.
Robert, you said you've lived there, what, 40 years or something?
No, I've lived in the city since 19, since 1989. I've lived in this community for about three, well, over three years.
Do you recall how many accidents maybe have occurred there over the course of time that you lived there?
I don't know that any have happened on Stony Ridge that I've heard of. I believe there've been a couple maybe that have happened on East Ridge, and it would probably be due, due to the fact of the speed on that street. One of the things that you felt the councilman mentioned was that the speed of the vehicles in this video on East Ridge, from the time that they leave Rocky Lane heading east, they pick up quite a bit of speed.
They do.
And I think that is one thing that does need to be addressed. If you put an additional stop sign there, and people know that there's gonna be, gonna be a place that they have to stop, anybody turning off of Rocky, or off of Stony Ridge either direction on the East Ridge will have the ability to cross at a controlled traffic intersection before the controlled intersection stop signs. And dropping the speed limit to 30 miles per hour in that area because that is a residential area. Apartment complexes on both sides, houses a little further down the street as we move into the Emerald Garden area, it will help control traffic in that area much better, not just at the apartment complex, but all the way down to Billy Hexton Road.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate that. Mayor, on another note, I have family members that live off of Newell Road, and I oftentimes, when I get ready to go back home where I live, I do go down Stony Ridge to East Ridge. And like Speaker Ms. Hendrick spoke, on the corner there at the stop sign, I normally will turn left going back west to Loop 338. And much like the Speaker Ms. Hendrick spoke, I have to look several times to make sure that I can see if there's any vehicles coming. That's a dangerous intersection right there, I will say about that. But I've not had any concerns with the, with the vehicles parked on the west curb of Stony Ridge. It's that intersection that I'm concerned about.
Joe, I think we passed it. You spoke on this issue. Is that my correct? Could you come up here and just help me understand? I just have a few questions. As I look on, I'll let you look at it if you want to. We took the no parking zone on Stony Ridge pretty far south. And the concern I'm hearing is that the intersection's dangerous because you can't see. It's a visibility, sight visibility issue. What if we, I'm asking, a couple of, I guess, things we've heard is speed limit, maybe. But how about if we took no parking zone, I'm gonna use the south side of East Ridge Road, I don't know, five car lengths or something so people can see?
That's what we had previous. We had, we had from East Ridge down 100 feet with no parking. But still, with all the utility trucks and the trucks on that, it was hard to see coming out of, out of the drives and out of the alley. In fact, I went out there just today and sat in those driveways and alleys. And I could see with no cars there, but envisioning cars there, it would have been obstructed.
I think what I'm confused about is it seems like everybody has said that the parking on Stony Brook isn't the problem, is the parking on East Ridge. But we, did we change any of the parking on East Ridge?
No, they, they just moved, they went off of Stony Ridge over to East Ridge. When we did, when we made.
So instead of parking on Stony Ridge, now they're parking on East Ridge.
Now you've traded another problem.
Yeah, squeeze the toothpaste, guess what comes out? Toothpaste.
Joe, I'm trying to understand you though. South, I'm looking at the picture up above us. As you can see, there's the, I'm gonna use the word, if you're going south on Stony Ridge, there's a, turn into the, to the parking lot. Where were you sitting that you couldn't see or had trouble seeing through the cars?
I came out the entrance to the parking lot.
But this one in the picture, or is it further south? I'm trying to figure if we could somehow compromise and have some parking of regular-sized cars, but not, but not blocking the intersection.
I sat right here, and it was.
Oh, with that one, okay.
And then there's an alley down here.
I'm gonna use the words, the crowd can't see us, your audience can't see us. You're indicating the very south part of the apartment complex.
Yes. This area, I'm sorry.
And this is the north area?
Was already restricted.
Right.
What we did with the recent ordinance is extend it down down the flats.
Right. And so what, what happens, what happened, and what really got this, I guess, going in my mind and other people's minds, is it kept going down Stony Ridge, down Stony Ridge to the south. There's an alley there, then there's a home. And I can't tell you how many times I'd go by there on Friday night or Thursday night, and there'd be two utilities, work utility vehicles, dooleys, parked up on the sidewalk, two wheels up on the sidewalk, going almost all the way down to the next street. So they just keep going and going and going. So it's gotta stop somewhere because it's just, it's dangerous.
What if we started enforcing the code that says we can't park on the sidewalk?
Well, that's probably a parking sign so they could see. I mean, if they park in the street, it's even more of a blocking.
Yeah. It's just when they get down past that last alley.
Are you saying where they straddled the front? They straddled it on the top of the curb? I mean, on top of the sidewalk?
You know, the route home we were talking about earlier, you go down 14th, 15th, 16th, they are all, two cars on, two wheels on the asphalt and two on the sidewalk, all the way down. And I'm presuming that's what you're talking about on Stony Brook.
Except their utility vehicles, I mean, with cranes on the back and all that stuff. Yeah, yeah, like you saw on East Ridge a minute ago. It's a, yeah, sure, Aaron.
Just to answer your question, Mr. Stoker, currently, we did shift actually code enforcement there at times that they work. So we have about 12 code enforcements total, 12 code enforcement officers total, which we know is a little short. But one thing we tried to do is actually shift them a little bit. So we're having some coming before eight o'clock and some staying after five to catch things like you're talking about. And yes, sir, it's a big problem, but we are trying to address that as much as we can.
Of course, what they're trying to cure, though, is not to be completely blocking the road. So I realize it's probably a violation of the code, but it's actually making visibility better by doing that, right? Maybe illegal, but if you can see better. I mean, I'm sorry, but I wanna see.
Then how do I get down that sidewalk in my wheelchair?
Just put a motor on it and go down the street.
That's with license plates, headlights.
It seems to me we have some problems. Visibility problems and parking problems.
Mr. Mayor, I like those apartment complexes. Is it possible we could go in that office and talk to them and say, "Look, if you guys got these trucks, they need to park in the parking lot. They don't need to park on the street." I'm like, Mr. Thompson, some of them just park in there because it's a shorter walk. If they got two parking spaces in there and they're not using. If they got two parking spaces in there and they not using one, they need to park that utility truck in there. We need to let the apartment complexes know that too. Look, you either start putting them in here or we're gonna start towing them out. Maybe that'll kinda help slow it down.
I mean, I, I can, I can tell you, it's been going on for so long that there was, I noticed it's gone, there was one little red, probably nineteen sixty pickup there that had so many bird droppings on it, it was not red anymore, it was white. I mean, it's been there so many years. And so people just parked it, somebody just parked it there and left it there. So I, it's, and again, there's a lot of kids in that apartment complex, I don't know how many. I, I see them playing out there all the time, kicking balls. And it's, it's a real concern.
The way your pickup was, you waving your hand.
Yes, ma'am. Come to the podium, I can't hear that well. I need you on a mic.
The people that own the red pickup didn't even live at Country Crest. And we tried to get it towed and we worked really hard to get it towed, but we do have a courtesy officer, Damon McGalvery, and he works with the street department and he's the one that got it towed finally. And there was two other abandoned ones there that the people didn't live at Country Crest.
But that's, that's, that's a management problem, not a city problem.
Well, but we can't tow from the city. That's why we, we can't, we can't call and have vehicles-
If it's parked on the street.
We, we can't have this, we can't do anything about the street parking.
Policy.
We got, we, we didn't have any authority to, we tried. We were like, can we get these, can we get these towed? And they're like, we don't have permission to tow from citizens, or however they put it, you know, so.
It's like if I came and parked in front of your house, you couldn't have my car towed.
You can't do nothing about it. I don't really understand that. We don't have, we don't have an ordinance. We got an order for everything else.
It's the public right of way, I can-
We would love to help.
Let's do this, let's do this. What if we tried to work together?
Yes.
Put this on workshop for the next meeting. Invite everyone to come in and try to help us and we'll talk internally and try to find some solutions for the parking, the speed, the safety issue. I want everyone's concerns addressed. I just don't think we have enough information right now to make a good decision, but I hear, I hear it all.
Yes, sir.
But I don't know what the solution is exactly. Let's think about it. Let's come together and we'll go put it on the next agenda for workshop, so we can hash it out and talk about some different solutions. Would that be okay with you?
Thank you.
I do have one more question for you though.
Yes, sir.
Are, do you, are, are, in your opinion, or maybe you know exactly, are there multiple families living in two-bedroom apartments or multiple quote-quote man camp things going on? There's a lot of trucks there.
There's a lot of trucks, but no, sir, we really, I mean, we're very strict on our policies about who lives there in the apartment. And we will evict them immediately if they have unauthorized people living in there. And with the restrictions on apartment communities, there can be four people living in a two-bedroom apartment. There can be six people living in a three-bedroom apartment. And our three bedrooms, it's mostly families and they have adult children now that are driving and, you know, working and have vehicles. So that's where multiple, a lot of multiple vehicles, the, the cars, not those utility vehicles. I would, I, I don't want those utility vehicles there either, because they are, number one, an eyesore. You see how pretty the property is and all?
Keep it nice.
And they're an eyesore and they're a hazard and you can't see around them. I, I sent multiple emails. I've, I've been the property manager for twenty-five years, so I've watched this escalate into where it, you know, it became. And I pled with them to please don't leave those vehicles at your job, leave them at your yard. We don't have room for them in the property. They stick out from the carports, like, like it's like two cars parked in there, because they don't fit.
I see them fall sideways in there too.
Yes. And they don't fit in there. And, you know, so they're putting them in there now, a lot of them. And they're, the, the Atwell trucks that sit on East Ridge, and I know we weren't, I didn't address anything about East Ridge because it wasn't on the agenda, but I, I got the Atwell people, they didn't have a yard. And I was like, we're not your yard. You can't park that mess here. There was two, the, two of those vehicles got totaled on two different occasions. And there's been four accidents on East Ridge with cars being hit since Stony Ridge was taken away.
Yeah. Well, I, I know the Atwell trucks, they were parked, they were using that for their yard, yeah, I know that.
A hazard, I mean, just a, and not to mention an eyesore. So we would love it if they couldn't park those utility vehicles, not only not on the street, but not on our property either.
Let me ask you this, is there a way that's, in, in y'all's end of the deal, there's something for you to think about, to not permit company trucks in your parking spaces? It has to be private individual cars?
Yes, sir, a certain, I, we're talking about a weight limit. And those utility vehicles won't.
Infinity.
They won't make the weight limit, they'll be over the weight limit.
Right.
And we're gonna lose people, we're, we're gonna lose people over the parking, but we're, we're, we know that there has to be a change and, and we wanna be a part of it and we wanna help and we'll do anything we can to make this better.
Yeah. That's all we can ask for.
Okay.
We'll try, we'll try to work with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I did wanna say that the discussion we had that I want, I guess, part of the work session, if we're bringing this up, is Mr. Tucker and, and they, they're applying for a grant to do a comprehensive safety study of the whole city. So hopefully it would address things like this, you know, identifying these intersections and coming up with solutions so that, you know, the, the solution can't be you have a stop sign and then a hundred feet later you have a stop sign. Like, that's just not, that's not practical. If you go to a real city somewhere, there's traffic calming and that, you know, they figured this stuff out so it exists. So I'd like to get either an update on that grant or the, what's going on with that and we talk about that in the work session.
Okay. We'll, we'll be sure to get that in front of you before the next work session.
Okay.
If this is a topic.
Thank you. And we appreciate it. All right. All right. Thank you. Don't need to, we don't need to table anything, we just move on. All right, let's go to item number eleven. Consider accepting committee's recommendation for the design build firm request for qualifications number twenty-five dash five-one-five-two-oh-dash-eleven, multi-sports complex design build, authorized city manager, interim city manager entering to contract negotiations. Aaron.
Mayor and council, thank you. So with this item, we would consider an award of request for qualifications, and this was number twenty-five dash five-one-five-two-dash-eleven. This was for the multi-sports complex design build. A request for qualifications was issued on June fourth, two thousand twenty-five. For this project, the multi-sports complex design build proposals were opened on June twenty-fifth. There were two submitters. Those belong to KD, I'm sorry, XD, General Contractors and Sports Med. The proposal requested qualified design build teams for the planning, design, and construction of a new multi-sports complex. The design build team was responsible, will be responsible for completing delivery of the project, including design permitting and construction. Submissions were evaluated by the selection committee based on the criteria established in the RFQ. Following a thorough review, the evaluation committee recommends entering into contract with Sports Med, whose qualifications and proposed approach were deemed most advantageous to the city. Staff's recommendation is to move forward with a selection of Sports Med and authorize the interim city attorney and the city manager to enter into contract negotiation.
Thank you, Aaron. Councilman, any questions? Only thing I wanted to add was, we'll enter into negotiations, but bring back execution to the council. Thanks, sir. Kim, any questions? Don, any tangents motion?
Mayor, I've moved that we approve the issuance, or accepting the request for qualifications for the sports complex design and build with Sports Med and authorizing the city manager and the interim city attorney, Eastridge, to sign, to negotiate those.
All right, just a few motions, are there a second? A second. Second by Councilman Canal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. Thank you, Aaron. All right, so we're gonna open a public meeting to consider approval of requests by via Real Estate LLC for a zone change from SF-three, single-family, three district, two, R-one, retail, one district, over four point five-two acre tract of land located in section thirty-eight, block forty-two. Liz.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The property involved in this request is located south of East Eighty-seventh Street, approximately a thousand feet west of Loop Three Thirty-Eight. The site is within the city limits and it has the current zoning of SF-three, single-family home, residential three. It's currently vacant and undeveloped. The property to the north is currently a coffee shop and a restaurant. The properties to the east, south, and west are vacant. Because it's Eighty-seventh Street, we do see a lot of traffic. We do think that rezoning this to light, sorry, to retail, R-one, would be ideal. The business that they're trying to bring to this specific location is tractor supply. So I do think that it would be something that would benefit the area and would serve the community that's already there. We did route it out to internally, we had no objections. We did bring it to planning and zoning on June nineteenth and it was approved with a vote of four-two-zero. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this sound change of SF-three to R-one.
Thank you, Liz. All right, let's open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak may do so now. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do you have anyone signed up? You're seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any discussion?
Only question, Liz, it's next door to the fire station?
Yeah, that next door, isn't it?
It's right next door to the fire station.
To the west is the fire station?
To the, to the east. It's next.
West.
To the west.
Oh. No.
I'm sorry. Jason.
Fire station's west. It is east. Yes.
It's east, yeah.
Fire station's west. Yes, I'm saying, you're, you're right. We're both right.
I know my east or my west. That's east.
Yeah, anybody want new tractor supply? So call it for a vote.
I had a question, did Retail Coach have anything to do with this?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Canal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, agenda item thirteen, resolution, consider change order modifying scope of work and cost for water treatment, plant rehab, miscellaneous upgrades. Alex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Utilities Department is here to ask for your consideration and approval for the modification of the contract with Garnet Construction to change the current scope of work and cost for the water treatment plant rehab project. Garnet, the general contractor for the project, is requesting adjustments to the contract due to changes within the project. During the project, due to existing conditions within the plant, we have not been able to isolate certain valving due to, to be able to complete portions of the construction. This has been found in several major portions of the construction, which include our rehabilitation of the filters, the clear wells, installation of our hydraulic relief line, and effluent line into our distribution system. This change order also encompasses the addition of a fire suppression system within our new chemical feed loading area. This area did not originally require a fire suppression system. Changes within the fire code and designs of our chemical feeds now require this portion of the facility to have a fire suppression system. The total requested funds and additional extension for substantial and final completion are nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and changing the substantial and final completion to December thirty-first and April ninth, December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five for substantial and April ninth, a final completion of two thousand twenty-six. These funds are within the contingency account for this project.
You have any questions?
So when we started, it wasn't in the code that we had to have it?
So when we designed, it was before the two thousand eighteen code. And then when we put, there was also some design changes within the, the structure. So we did not think that it was actually designed, or when we originally designed it, it did not have it. So then whenever we, they sent the plans in for the original pre-development meeting, it was not in. So then whenever fire came out to look at the buildings, they checked and said, hey, you guys need fire suppression for this portion of the building. So then we had to add that as a design factor into it. So it's, it was a portion in our chemical loading system where we didn't think that we needed it, because it's a bay door, we leave it open, it's just the loading for that, but they wanted us to add that to the system.
I'm not trying to be, but I thought the last meeting we discussed, we weren't giving any more change orders.
So this is, so this is what-
But this was the one he was talking about.
So when I-
He said, I'm bringing you one more.
Yeah, this is, this is what I spoke about.
Bringing you one more and that's all. So after this, we can get mad at him, but I'll, I'll stick up for him on this one.
Okay. I'll make sure I didn't misunderstand.
Well, I thought the same thing.
Okay.
I told him, I said, you made me go watch the last meeting.
I would love to not have to bring this to you, but we, we, again, like I talked about in the work session, we are on the tail end of this project. I know it seems like quite a bit, a lot, quite a, quite a long time away from where we're at, but we are at substantial with quite a bit of things, mostly on the construction side. We have a lot of INC, SCADA, and startup and commissioning for the entire rehab that we've been doing. That's the majority of what's gonna take the long time in the extension for this.
Thanks, Alex. Question? Any other discussion or questions? No. It's Donna, any tangents motion then?
Move approval of the change order for the water treatment plant as presented.
All right. Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoker, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. All right, agenda item fourteen, consider to extend the engineering service contract with Corio Engineers for the water treatment plant rehabilitation and miscellaneous upgrade projects.
So with the extension for our general contractor, we have to extend the engineering contract that we have out there with Corolo. There are onsite eyes and ears as a city representative on location. So they are, with that extension, we have to extend their contract. So that is an additional cost of one, one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And this actually extends to April thirtieth on, on their contract.
Counsel, any questions?
And we have this within the contingency also. So after this, the leftover in the contingency is one million, four hundred and fourteen thousand and some change.
Good.
And we do, we do not expect at this moment in time to accept, to, to change anything and we are on the tail end of that, so.
It's recorded, right?
I agree.
Make sure you do realize.
On video.
On video, we have it. All right, gentlemen, any questions or discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
I so move, Mayor.
There are motion by Councilman Vasquez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex, appreciate it. Let's go to item, agenda item number fifteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of City of Odessa, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificate of obligations, series two thousand twenty-five, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, levy a tax in payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase letter and a paying agent slash register agreement, and enacting other provisions related thereto. Aaron.
Mayor and council, thank you. You basically read everything for me there, sir. But I do wanna say that just with this, obviously, this is the funding mechanism or part of the funding mechanism that we use to pay for the sports complex to the tune of forty million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, the rest of, of course, coming from fund balances from various sources within the city. I wanna also say that this item was advertised as required by law and was subject to petition and we received no petition. And I asked Norma today if anyone even inquired and the answer was no. So there was no real interest at all from the public of, of petitioning this. With that, I'll introduce George Williford with Hilltop Securities and Mr. Glenn Opel to give you all an overview of this, the funding of this CO.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, it's good to be back. And for the record, George Williford with Hilltop Securities. I believe each of you should have a copy similar to this, and I'm not sure if they will. Yes, and, and also it's projected overhead as well. If you'll remember in May, when we came and the council acted on the resolution to publish, as Aaron said, the notice of intent to issue these certificates, we outlined what were negotiated terms with Frost Bank as purchaser of the certificates and so on. And everything is completely in line with that. If you'll recall, we had an indicative rate, and of course, that was gonna be contingent upon what interest rates did over the next 45-plus days, between 4.9 and, and 5%. Pardon me, and we were using 5% in all of our number examples and so on in actuality. And this was set right before the July 4th holiday. The interest rate will be 4.97%, so it's totally in line. If you'll recall, the issue will be structured on a 20-year amortization. It'll actually have a 10-year of those stated repayment terms, so you'll have a more or less balloon or term maturity occur in that 10th year. The first two years will be no principal payments, interest only, and that's really to get through the construction period associated with the sports complex until revenues and so on can hopefully start being generated and available. As I indicated, principal then be payable March 1/28 through the 2036 final maturity. The issue will be eligible to be prepaid or redeemed at par beginning March 1/28. And so if you'll recall, what's anticipated and, and thought is that around that time or thereafter, the financing would be refinanced or refunded and extended with a actual stated repayment term over a longer period. What we've been looking at is, in all likelihood, a 30-year overall repayment. And if that's the case, and if interest rates are within the bounds of kind of what we used for illustration when we were before you before, then that would lower the debt service to around 2.65 to 2.85 million per year thereafter. Behind that summary, this is the actual structure of the deal. As Aaron said, $40,225,000. The 225 is for associated costs, the Attorney General, bond counsel, our fee, and then Frost counsel for their fee for review and participation. So the city's can actually receive for $40 million for project costs. And then this is the actual debt service. You'll see the first year's interest. This is through September 15th of '26. It'll be about $2,143,000. The reason for that is that there's a little bit more than a year. We're gonna close August 5th. So this is interest from August 5th this year through September 15th of '26, and then '27's interest only, and then roughly 3.17 to 3.175 million payments for the next several years until that final balloon. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We would recommend approval. And then, as Aaron said, Glenn Opal with Bracewell Bond Counsel is the city's here to answer or address any legal questions you might have.
Thanks, George. Appreciate it. Council, any questions?
The total on the principal and the debt service then is total?
Fifty-eight-nine.
Fifty-eight-nine, okay.
Yes, through the final.
That's the total.
Who's our first speaker?
Tam Ogilvy.
Tam, come on up.
Everybody cringes. They're giving me a microphone.
You have it only three minutes.
Yeah, that's the, that's the positive. I'm Tam Ogilvy, and I'm speaking to you tonight not only as a member of this community and business owner, but I've been here for 60 years, over 60 years, and am really proud of this project. And I wanna thank each one of you for doing it and standing in and fighting to make sure that it happened. Especially you, Steve. You've taken a lot of hits. All of you have, but, but just a quick little thing I wrote about what a park means to our community and everything. This project is more than just a set of fields. It's a long-term investment in the heart and future of our community. For our youth, the complex will provide safe, accessible spaces to play, learn, and grow. Sports keep kids healthy, teach discipline, and build teamwork. Right now, we have more young athletes than we have space, and this facility would directly address that need. It's a place where children can dream big, families can come together, and memories can be made. For our city, this complex represents real economic development. With upgraded facilities, we can host regional tournaments that bring in visitors, filling our hotels, restaurants, and businesses. It's a smart way to keep our dollars here at home while also drawing in new ones. And for our community as a whole, the Amy Bell Sports Complex will be a point of pride, a modern gathering space that reflects the kind of city we want to be. Active, healthy, connected, and forward-thinking. I understand that every public investment requires careful consideration, but I believe this is the right project at the right time. Our population is growing, our needs are clear, and the benefits, both immediate and long-term, are significant. And also in listening to this, thanks for choosing Frost Bank. I mean, they've got 100 employees, four branches in our community. They have been a part of this community. My dad was involved with Western National Bank when they founded it and it became Frost, and so thanks for not using somebody in North Carolina. I respectfully urge you to approve the development of the Amy Bell Sports Complex and the issuance of the certificates of obligation. Let's give our city the facility it deserves, and let's send a strong message that we're investing in our future. Together, we can build the future. I stole that off y'all's website.
Thanks, Tam.
Thanks, Tim, so much.
Who's next?
Dallas Kennedy.
Dallas.
My name's Dallas Kennedy. I completely disagree with that. No. I am in favor of building this, of going ahead and taking out this debt to build this complex. I've heard complaints about the costs and about some bull hockey conspiracy theory about us using a local bank, but I say if you're gonna do it, do it right the first time. Don't do it on the cheap. You know, two years ago, I got new flooring in my house, and I spent almost $10,000. Now, could I have done it cheaper? If I went to a big box store and bought some cheap flooring myself, found some guy on Facebook that does it occasionally on the weekend and got it done in my house, probably could've got it done cheaper, but it would've been ripped up in three or four years. So I called Paul Evans Carpet, the best flooring place in town, and had, had him do my floor. I loved it. I'm glad that he was able to do it because the owner of the place is a personal friend of mine. He's a guy that I love and respect. If something was wrong with my floor at 3:00 in the morning, I could've called him up and said, hey buddy, the floor's coming up, and he would've come out there and fixed it. So, you know, if there's a building, if there's a flooring contract on this, I hope you use Paul Evans Flooring. They're a great local business. So this bull hockey about us using a local bank, I say go for it. Frost Bank brings money back into the community. They're people that we can trust. They're people that have, that do a lot for our community. That money comes back into our community, and when their employees go buy stuff, guess what? They're paying right back into this with their sales tax. So yes, go big, do it right the first time, don't go cheap, and go local. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dallas. Next?
That's all.
That's it. All right, Council, any discussion or questions?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Statement. The, my concern is, I'm very excited about this, and I'm in a position where I've seen a transition. On one hand, I'm so happy the ball has carried. My initial, when I was first introduced to this, we were looking at revenue bonds and public-private partnerships, that type of thing. Wow, I really like that. So we're stepping off in a different way to get this done. So my, here's my question. We have 75 million in leftover certificates of obligation funds, general funds and hotel occupancy checks, that's one part of it. We have 40 million as CO, but if we take interest and debt service, 58.9. 133, let's call it. So prefacing that we do have other concerns, we, let's see. We need two fire stations. We are looking at Bob Derrington, number two, down the way, which will be a CO most likely. We have to look at dance at what we're doing. We're looking at the city salaries shortly. We may have to make some adjustments. We have, we have a lot of things going on, and I'm so in favor of this, yes. But I'm just asking, let's do think and let's do be sure of what we're doing. So my question is, I'm looking at Kayla and Kaylee over there. Is it fair to ask? Can we do this?
Well, let me start, but there is a mistaken assumption in your statement.
Okay.
But it's not your fault because that's what was reported. But after I was elected, I, I met with Steve and I met with the Times Centurion, which will be a funding mechanism. This is still a public-private partnership. Same thing. Nothing's changed. The difference is, somebody misinformed this prior council and said it's 107% funded. It was never funded. 107% was the amount of the loan you were taking out in a note issued by Centurion. Okay, you're gonna pay all that. All of it was in bond money, okay? I don't know where the train got off the tracks, but when I got on and started meeting with them, we went through, I don't know, a meeting a week for 12 weeks.
Long time.
And interim city manager, Richard Morton, and myself went to the people, said, this, these numbers don't make sense. Where they coming from? Well, and the whole thing was prefaced on the city having a bond rating. Centurion couldn't issue the debt of, gave that a bond rating. We didn't have one then, and we don't have one now. And so the only thing that's different is we're using our own money, 75 million of it, to, to fund this. And while I don't disagree with you, we have, we're gonna have problems with funding salaries that we have to increase, in my opinion. We're gonna have to build at least one new fire station this calendar year and maybe another one the next budgetary year, I should say. We do have needs. So there's, there's no doubt needs exist across the spec, and you can include water, you can include roads. And you could argue one's more important than the other. But every economic development project onboard right now, the number one, two, or three most important thing to companies coming to Odessa is quality of life. That used to not even be in the top 10. Now it's in the top 3.
I agree.
And one of the things they demand is opportunity for youth sports. And so we historically have not had that opportunity. If this is gonna give us that opportunity, it's gonna give us the quality of life that we've not had. Number one, and number two, it's actually doable. This, this is gonna work. Whereas before, and I'm not criticizing anyone, but the truth is, the Centurion funding mechanism was never gonna work until the city had a bond rating. And two things happened, I guess. Number one, the cost of the facility, three years ago when it was started, was $70 million. It's doubled, and that's no one's fault. In this room, it's just the prices have doubled. But the second thing is, by postponing the project, all it really did was increase the cost of it. And so we can put it off and do it later. It'll be 200 million or 250 million. And so from my perspective, we do have a lot of needs in the city, but I don't think you can ignore the needs of our youth, our sports. And this one project actually will make money. And I say that because we actually fired the prior manager of the facility because we didn't believe the pro formas were righteous. I, I truly believe, and everyone that's looked at believes these pro formas were righteous, we'll actually make money on this project. So, and that money will go directly to our parks, because it's gonna actually help fund more parks. So from my perspective, this is the right move. It has my support, but I'm not gonna lie and say there's not other needs in the city. That, that's an absolute true statement. And so I think that's what we're elected to do, is represent the people. And the feedback I've gotten from both citizens, from others, by the way, other mayors in other cities, they want Odessa to have this complex. So they, so their teams in Crane, Monahans, Andrews, Fort Stockton now have a place, they don't have to go to Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, Orlando, Albuquerque, Amarillo. They can actually come here somewhat locally. And so it, it's a, it's a, it's a valid question. For me, this is the project I think Odessa needs the most. And you get the most bang out of the buck. That is, you're actually giving the kids a sports center. We'll have national, certainly regional and national tournaments. And we'll actually make money, so we'll actually help our other parks. And so I just think this is the right thing to do, from my perspective.
And you've spent more time with finance than I have on this, and you're comfortable. Because I've been excited about this. I just want us to move in the right area correctly as good servants, and you feel comfortable with finance.
I do.
Okay.
I think this is the right project.
Mayor, if I, if I may, and just to clarify a couple of things, because everybody doesn't know what's been happening behind the scenes. It is so complex. But Mayor, you're correct. It still is a public-private partnership. Mr. Bell got a $6.5 million grant from ODC to pull water and infrastructure up to that piece of property. And that was, that's a private part, because he's putting in the Amy Bell Memorial Park, the children's park, he and Ellen. And so the other thing you need, people need to realize is, and I guess we probably should've shared these numbers before, but first year anticipated revenues for the facility are $4.6 million. EBITDA of that year is expected to be $4.3 million. In 10 years, it's expect, this is on 130 million, so that's what it was before the last number changed. But we didn't rerun it. Richard didn't rerun it for me before that. But in a 10-year span, the project is expected to collect revenues of $55,998,000 with an EBITDA of $51 million. And you take out the lease pay, the payments out of that, and the project, if there's a gap, there could be a gap, but we've got. That's why we have private foundation money to cover any shortage of revenue. Plus, this sports complex will be eligible for hotel motel tax funding. And so we've got several, several resources to cover any shortages that might occur. I'm very comfortable with the numbers. Like Mayor said, the first set of numbers I didn't like either. And why Centurion got involved, I'm really not even sure at this point, but we have a lot of interest in, in giving money. There's already been, you know, around $10 million committed privately. And to go into the foundation, the foundation will, they'll oversee the company that we hired to manage the complex, and they'll also handle all the donations and make sure that they're spent judiciously. And so I think we've done all of our due diligence. There's been a lot of time spent on it. Mr. Bell has poured his heart and soul into his side of it, besides giving us 100 acres out there, which is worth about $50 million. So I just believe it is, and I wanna thank, I wanna personally thank Wesley Bounds and the people at Frost, because they actually came to me and said, if you need any help, we're here. We don't have a bond rating. They're buying these bonds. Now, you think they don't know who they're dealing with? They do. They've got trust in us, and I think that says volumes for the way we run in the city. And I don't think anybody could argue with that. So I wanna thank Wesley and, and Paul Lucas and the guys at Frost. They just did a wonderful job. They did it very quickly. I mean, it was fast. So anyway, just wanna make that statement. I'm so glad Mr. Tiny's got his frozen loader out there for you tomorrow morning to get on to move some dirt, so I'm making sure of that. Or at least on August the 5th, maybe. Maybe we oughta wait till August the 5th. I don't know. So otherwise, we'd be putting it off until we got a bond rating. So Frost is to be commended. I thank them and give them really a big thumbs up.
Well, it's a big move. I just think it's worth discussion.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not unhappy. Everybody's gotta have a point.
Any other questions or- Speaking of that, any other questions or discussion?
Well, I was just going to say, as a economic development piece, you know, this is, these are one-time dollars, we've talked about that. You, you, you wouldn't spend that on salaries, that's how we're going to wind up in the hole we got to dig ourselves out of. So this is an investment that not only is going to make money here, but economically, you know, stimulating Odessa's economy through all of these people coming in, buying dinner, buying gas, buying, staying in hotels, so the sales tax revenue we're going to pick up, that is ongoing revenue that goes into our, our bucket. I mean, we get one percent of all that, so, um, we've got that, we have the opportunity for the, the venue tax to be bracketed, and that will come in the next legislature, that'll add another one point nine percent that, that will go on top, so I, I think as a-
Thanks for mentioning it, I forgot.
Yeah, as, as an investment, um, I don't know, like Cal said, I don't know that there's a better one that's going to make the money back, and I, I believe over the thirty-year pro forma, it's over a billion dollars of economic stimulation to the Odessa economy, so, I mean, that's, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on everything, everybody, I've, I've told everyone in this room, y'all all need a raise, but, uh, we get there by making smart investments like this, so.
This, this may be already a done deal, but one of the issues that I remember, uh, early, early on was the concern with the contractual language, the legal, legal language. Where are we with that right now, Mr. Stretcher? Everything looking pretty good, better, or?
I think, I think we're in good shape with COs, for sure. And just out of an abundance of caution, Mayor, and I, I kind of hate to bring it up, but this is, this is not an economic development project, this is for the parks.
Yeah, correct.
And, and the money will go back to the parks. And the only reason I'm saying that is if it's an economic development project, it, it has a whole different set of rules. And so i- it's a parks project, the revenue will go back to the parks, I think as Mr. Thompson said, and it will be used for the parks. Now, there may be some ancillaryal, ancillary, but just the main focus and the sole focus is the parks.
For sure.
And I think that's what I told you, Greg, is that this gives us revenue to fix all the parks, which everybody's got.
I didn't say anything different. I can't help it if they buy gas when they're coming to enjoy our parks.
He's cautious.
Caution.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You've not entertained a motion.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that, uh, this council authorize, uh, the issuance of the certificates of obligation, Series Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, not to exceed forty million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, and authorize, uh, city manager and interim city attorney, Key Stretcher, to, uh, negotiate that and, uh, get it in place.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I see.
Second, Councilman Caddell, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, it passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number sixteen, uh, discuss, consider all City of Odessa commissions and board members, including appointment, reappointment removing for modification, including the following. Is there any action to take tonight?
No action.
All right, so having no action then. Number seventeen, Gilbert, is your favorite one.
Uh, move that we adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
All right, must adjourn, there's a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Stoker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.